I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Avon Board of Education for October 18th at 7:00 PM. I'd like to start our meetings now by doing a roll call of board members as well as our administrators. So for those of you who have joined us for the first time, you might be figuring out who we are and it'll just help you to know who's speaking this evening. So I will start with board members and myself. I am Deb Schuh, I am the chair. Sage Singh, vice chair.
Here, Deb.
Jeffrey Fleishman is unable to join us tonight. He's our secretary. Jackie Blaia.
Present, thank you, Deb.
Thank you. Laura Young is joining us virtually. I can see her on my screen, so she's still with us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Lisa Semenera.
Present, thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Katz.
Present, Deb, thank you.
Thank you. Liz Summercorn.
Here.
And Sarah Thompson.
Present, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. And now for our administrators. Dr. Bridget Carnamal, our superintendent.
Present, thank you.
Justin Neeny, our assistant superintendent.
Present, thank you.
Roberto Medick, assistant superintendent.
Present, thank you.
Susan Russo is joining us virtually as well, our business manager. And Shirley Moy, our executive assistant to the superintendent and our board clerk.
Present, thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. All right, so I'll just make a quick announcement for anybody. If you are interested in making a public comment, we do have a sign up sheet at the table as you are entering. It's a circular table over there. But moving on, if you wouldn't mind joining me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Am I speaking loudly enough? That's not something I tend to be very good at. Can you guys hear me okay? All right. We are still working with nutmeg microphones, so we're going to try to project a little bit more in this space for you. I like to begin our meetings by reading the mission statement, so it reminds us all why we are here at the table together. Our mission is to inspire in each student a joy and passion for learning and a commitment to excellence, personal integrity, and social responsibility. I always feel that's the perfect segue to move into our Avon Achievers portion of the meeting. I would like to invite Mr. Duffy Ford and Ms. Salvatore from Thompson Brook School. And what I'd like, as you're presenting teachers instead, that to come forward, if you would come up here, we'd love to shake your hand and give you a certificate, and then you can join us around the back of the table and we can take a big group shot together.
Great. Would you like us to stand on camera?
That's perfect. Thank you.
Or over here. Good evening, everyone. I am very excited to be here to introduce a whole host of Thompson Brook School teachers who have been at Thompson Brook School for 20 years, and that's a bit of a reason to celebrate because we're celebrating our 20th anniversary at Thompson Brook School this year. So we've been looking for reasons to celebrate coming out of COVID, and this is one great opportunity. So in addition to other things, we're looking to do monthly celebrations on the 20th of every month. We're having movie night on October 20th. We're partnering with our PTO. November 20th, we actually have a time capsule that we're going to open from 2002. So these are our living time capsule items that I'm going to introduce to you. And so much changes at Thompson Brook because it is a two-year school and the students come in and then leave and go on to the middle school so quickly. But it's nice to have a core, a steady group of quality teachers, quality educators who keep Thompson Brook the excellent institution that it is. So I would like to formally introduce each of them. We have 12 on our list. It doesn't look like they're all here. Looks like one just came in, so we'll get most of them on the list, and we will recognize those at least by name who are not here. So when I call their name, if you have a suit.
Yes, then please come forward and let's shake your hand and give you a certificate.
Come up, shake hands here, and then gather behind the table. So I'd like to start with Ms. Renee Benigno.
Thank you.
Kim Burge.
Nice to see you.
Carl Sauerbrunn.
Thank you very much.
Nate Strick. And Karen Brewer. And I have to say it's because of these teachers and the rest of our staff, but certainly having a core group that's been here for so long that really was instrumental in keeping the ships steady going through COVID and all of the challenges and requirements that took. So having this foundation was extremely helpful and I think really helped us navigate that as best we possibly could. So thank you all as a group, and thank you for being at Thompson Brook School for 20 years. (applause)
That way more of you are on this side, so we'll come to this side. Shirley, if you want to sit down. You guys are seated?
Yeah, you guys sit.
Yeah, good. Tall people, tall, Kim's gotta go here. Cheryl's gotta go. Cheryl's gotta go. Hi. How are you? Hi. So exciting. Okay, everybody, Shirley. Okay, great. Congratulations. So thank you, everybody. That is quite an accomplishment. I love the whole time capsule connection too. I'm curious what's in there. But thank you for taking the time to celebrate with us. We didn't get a chance to do this at convocation with you guys, so this is really amazing. So we appreciate you being here. All right, so next, I would love to welcome for Dr. LaCarne and also, I don't know, is Ms. Devivo with you? I see Mr. Lee. No, she wasn't able to be here, but Mr. Lee's here. Mr. Lee is here. Please come on forward. And we'll do the same thing. If the students can come forward, we'll give them a certificate and shake their hand once you've announced their names.
Great, good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing all right today. So we are here to formally recognize our National Merit Scholar commended students. So every year, about 1.5 million students take the PSAT across the nation, and about 34,000 or the top 3% of those students are recognized as commended students for the National Merit Scholarship Program. And fortunately for us, we had 13 of our last year juniors, this year seniors be considered commended students. So I'm going to call those students up right now. We have Nandini Unan. Amanda. Arun Shaka. Ryan Bellville. Patedge. Jada Bitt. There we go. Hi, Ryan. Congratulations. I'll take a picture with you as well, if you don't mind. Sandy Aurora. Melany Wong. Sandra Yu. Kat Rishwendenman. Wyatt Horstfield. Sorry, we're sorting through folks that weren't able to make it, so. You're gonna go here. I'll get to that one in a second. For the picture, I'm gonna do that one. Madula Ganesh. Vira Shah. And Aman Bhuwesh. So along with the 13 commended students, we also had two students who were considered semifinalists. And the semifinalists are in the top 4.5% of all the PSATs taken. They're about 16,000 across the nation, and we had two of them right here. We had Ms. Julia Zheng. And Ariella Reynolds. Ariella, is Ariella here? No. Okay. There you go, Julia. Nice to see you. Do we just have another round of applause?
So now, parents, if you would like an image as well, certainly, come on up.
Are we going to go on angles? Or you can step inside if you want.
You want the angle? Okay. You want the angle?
Yeah?
Oh, we're going on the angle?
All right.
There you go. Whatever you want to do.
City is better.
You don't want to block it. Come on in. We just need to be stressed out.
All right.
We have to get Dr. One.
Thank you.
Excellent. Congratulations, everybody. That is a huge accomplishment, and to have so many at one high school is quite impressive. So for those of you who came to join us for this purpose this evening, we will not take offense if you want to dismiss yourselves and enjoy the rest of your evening together, but we were glad we could celebrate this with you. Thank you very much. So moving on to the next piece of business, approval of our minutes from the Board of Education regular monthly meeting of September 27, 2022. Do I have a motion to approve? I see Lisa's hand, and a second by Lynn. All in favor? Aye. And we got Laura too, so that's unanimous with eight. Next is communication from the public. Do we have anyone on the list?
You do, so you have Megan Gengard.
Okay, so what I'll do first is read our instructions for this section of our meeting, and then I'll ask you to come forward. This is the section of our meeting where Avon residents have the floor to share their thoughts and our concerns with the board. It is not an opportunity for conversation, rather, it's the board's chance to listen to feedback from the community. Please add your name to the list. Ms. Moy will then call you up in order, and you must state your name and address for the record. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak. In an effort to hear as many of you as we can, we must adhere to this time limit. You can certainly state that you agree or disagree with a previous comment if you'd prefer to be brief. Brevity will allow more attendees to be heard. After 15 minutes are up, the board may choose to extend public comment or not. No speaker will include charges or complaints of a personal nature against any individual Avon Board of Education member or individual employee of the Avon Board of Education, whether the speaker names the individual or not. Please refrain from clapping or cheering. Ms. Moy will be our timekeeper tonight. If you should reach two and a half minutes, she will alert you with a 30-second warning, and at the three-minute mark, you will be alerted again to signal that your time is up. We welcome your engagement and participation. So our first speaker, if you want to come forward, please. If you can use that mic or either sit, is that more comfortable?
Sure.
All right. If you don't mind saying your name and your address, please.
Megan Gengard, 16, Brownstone Drive. Good evening. As most of you may remember me from talking last year, if not me, my shirt. I'm a sixth grade English Language Arts teacher out of district for 22 years. I have a degree in elementary and middle school education. I have a master's plus 15 in curriculum leadership. I started studying reading for the past four years because my own child was struggling learning to read. I now am working toward a certificate in reading intervention. I've spoken out about the science of reading here in Avon, also the Avon Readers and Writers Workshop curriculum that has recently been implemented in the K-3 curriculum. And I've also talked about changes coming to Connecticut. Those changes are upon us in the legislation passed, and the Reading Leadership Implementation Council was created in Connecticut. As the board is certainly aware, the state has pushed out approved curriculum. There are five of them. And Avon has to decide on their curriculum and what we're going to use by December 16th. The current curriculum being used in K-3, the Readers and Writers Workshop, is not an approved curriculum. At the time of rollout, the Reading Leadership Implementation Council said that, quote, "No waiver will be given to any curriculum that is listed as does not meet on ed reports," and that is Readers and Writers Workshop. However, that language was changed due to pushback from school districts who currently use this program. In listening to Frances Repinowitz, the Executive Director of Connecticut Association of Public Schools, speak at the most recent public meeting, she was quoted as saying that she believes in SOAR, however, she knows that many districts are pushing back that are using the Readers and Writers Workshop. Because of the 17 districts in the state of Connecticut that currently use the units of study, this review had most of the time and most people working on it to do the review. However, it still did not align with structured and systematic literacy, which we know is how students learn to read, how people learn to read, and it could not align with the legislation. I'm gonna end, that means 30 seconds. I'm gonna end by imploring Avon Board of Education and the Curriculum Office to really be transparent about our selection this time of our curriculum moving forward. This is going to be different and difficult for students, teachers who have spent time learning this new curriculum, parents, Board of Education. So please don't rubber stamp the program. I really want us to do our research, talk to other districts, and use the science. The science is there for us. The teachers and the children deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gengard. Ms. Moy, do we have another one?
We do. We have Kelvin Hecht. He's our last speaker.
Thank you. My name is, I'll stand if I may.
Sure.
My name is Kelvin Hecht. I live on 115 Revenus. I'm a longtime resident and a retired member of the Board of Education. From '83 to '91, as an aside, this is not what I, I'm very impressed with your merit scholars. The first year that I was on the board, we had no merit scholars in Avon, and we were getting problems because Simmsbury always did. And that first board, we made major change to our curriculum, and I, that's what resulted. So you're doing a fabulous job. Continue. My issue, it's minor compared to the issues that you're dealing with here. I go to athletic events at the high school. I started my children's school. I found when I was in Board of Education, I learned a lot about the student body by going to athletic events. To me, it was very important. My youngest graduated 31 years ago. I still go. What I'd like to be able to do is go to the website of the high school, click on the athletic department, click on the sport that I'm interested in this season, and see the roster, see if my friend's grandson made the team. That roster is not on the website. I'd like to know who they're playing, what their schedule is, what their win and loss records. It's not there. The only information is who the coach is. I'm sure there's a fabulous reason why in this time when statistics and information like this is readily available around the world, it's not on your website. I'm just hoping that there may be a reason why you could put it on the website. So I don't know why it's not there, and I'm just here to see if it's feasible to put information that the townspeople could see who's participating. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Hecht. Would you mind leaving your phone number with Shirley so that we can get back to you with a response?
Yes.
Okay. Welcome back to the Board of Ed.
By the way, that board, when I, the last year, we built the Thompson School. That was 20 years.
Excellent. That's exciting. That's perfect night to come. We're glad you took the time. Shirley, do we have anyone else? Okay, that completes our communication from the public. Thank you so much. Our next item of information will come from our student representatives. We have Charlotte Perry, our senior, and Lillian Pang, our junior. So ladies, I'll let you work out who would like to speak first.
Okay. So first off with AHS, we are planning our homecoming for early November in combination with our football games, so that comes with our pep rally and our Spirit Week. And our Student Gov is working very hard planning out the logistics of what grade wears what color and whether the seniors can wear Halloween costumes. There's also been multiple college visits a couple times per week, so I know a lot of seniors have been really interested in those. Most of them take place in the guidance office. I know the bigger ones sometimes are in the auditorium, but that takes a lot of attention for the seniors, and it's very exciting. I know that a lot of my peers are very excited about the marine bio and gym class field trips. They're going to Hugh Blaine Tower tomorrow, and I know that my own marine bio class is going to the beach in two weeks. So that's really exciting. So fall sports are coming to an end, so that opens up the registration for winter. My next part is about Avon Middle School. They are holding their intermeals sports, which are Tuesdays and Thursdays after school. They are having, they're recognizing their custodians for all the work that they put in the school, and they have been sending that out to in all their newsletters, making sure that people know to thank Jeff Olson, Tom Reddy, Jason Porlud, and Eddie Vargas for all their hard work. And they're also very excited about their new Student Council Lime and Pie fundraiser, or they're raising money for their student gov's and selling pies this October. Lastly, I have TBS. As we've already talked about, they're celebrating their 20th anniversary with various activities on the 20th of every month, and all the students are very excited about their Ice Age themed movie watch this 20th of the month. They're also uniting against bullying with spirit wear every week, and they are also participating in the One and Done fundraiser. Students just went on a Sturbridge Village field trip a couple weeks ago. A lot of parents were sending pictures in on their newsletters, looked like a lot of fun, and the students are planning on wearing their Halloween costumes on October 28th in school.
All right. So Pine Grove School just had a professional development day with the K-4 teachers, with the reading labs, with Gary Peterson. On Thursdays and Fridays in September and October, the Assistant Principal, Mrs. Buckle, has been visiting kindergarten classrooms to read aloud to them and learn more about the classes, and she will be doing this for the first graders in November and December. On Monday, October 31st, PGS will hold a Halloween parade for all students, and families are invited to come that morning to watch students parade in their costumes. For Pine Grove and Roaring Brook School, kindergarteners and first graders have received a visit from the Avon Volunteer Fire Department and learned about fire safety, met our hometown heroes, and had a lot of fun. As a launch activity for their exploration of the indigenous peoples of Connecticut, the third grade traveled to the Institute for American Indian Studies. Students enjoyed a guided tour, traditional stories told by a Chatten Oak storyteller, and a visit to a replica village. And the Avon Recreation Parks Department is excited to announce the first-ever trunk-or-treat event in Sycamore Hills Park on Saturday, October 29th, from 11 to 1:00 PM. Families with younger children are encouraged to come and participate in the festivities, and special thanks to the PTO for helping plan this.
Thank you, Charlotte and Lillian. It's nice to hear what's going on in the buildings. So we have Ms. Russo with us virtually to help us with our financial report. Susan, can you hear us okay?
Committee meeting this month, so we will not be presenting financials.
Okay, we didn't have a meeting, so we won't be presenting financials. Thank you, Susan. I appreciate that. Okay, so next is our committee reports, curriculum and professional practices. Jackie?
We have an upcoming meeting, and I think that date is to be determined because we might have, it was supposed to be on the 25th, and I think we're going to reschedule it.
All right, thank you. Finance, Lynn?
Yes, as Susan Russo just shared, we did not have a meeting this past month, but our next meeting is November 9th, and our capital improvement budget was reviewed at our September meeting, and it's in the agenda for tonight. The majority of our Board of Ed members were present for the original finance committee meeting where that was presented.
Thank you. Next is negotiations. That would be me. We don't have any working at the moment, but our next contract will be administrative assistance. Policy, Laura has asked Sage to present this piece for her. Since she's virtual, it'll just be easier probably to hear.
So the committee did not meet this month, but we did have two policies that are on the old business that the Board of Ed had to do a second read of. And then the board is having a legislative update with the Board Council, and that's scheduled for November 3rd, and Ms. Moy has sent out the information.
Excellent, thank you. Now our liaison report, Capital Region Education Council, Jackie?
Nothing to report. The meeting is tomorrow.
All right, thank you. Next is the chair report. I just want to reiterate how proud I am of our students and the accomplishments that they've been able to pull off with all of the stress that's been going on. It's really quite impressive that we had so many National Merit Scholars, so incredibly proud of that. Incredibly proud of our staff for wanting to be in our district as long as they have, and we are grateful to have them, and it is a legacy that I know our students remember them well. I saw Mr. Strick come over and say hi to Lillian before the meeting, so they remember our students just as much as our students remember them. So we really appreciate that they took the time to join us tonight so we could appreciate them. And I will now present Dr. Carnamal for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Medick. Very brief hiring report tonight.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. A very brief hiring report. As you can see, we had no certified hires, and that continues that we did have all of our certified positions filled prior to the start of the school year. We had two non-certified new hires, an interventionist at Pine Grove and a teaching assistant at Pine Grove, and we did have one resignation for a para educator at Avon Middle School. We do have several non-certified positions still posted that we are looking to interview candidates for various positions, both para educators and some other non-certified staff. And we've had no retirements this month.
Thank you. On the enrollment report, to say very similar last month, this is page 13 in the packet. Two additional students have registered since September. That gives us an overall difference, same time last year, about 19 students. However, we also still have 22 outplayed students that are not included in those enrollment reports. Should mention that on the enrollment report, the 190, 109 choice students that we mentioned are included in those enrollment reports. We just break it out so that the board has an idea of the total number right now, because as you know, we've had several conversations about that and the target numbers for open choice. So we're still a bit below where we'd like to be, but still working with the crack office on that. On the strategic plan update, we have continued our meetings as an administrative team, as a whole leadership team from Central Office and out in the buildings also, our principals and assistant principals.
on the old business, that the Board of Ed had to do a second read of. And then, the board is having a legislative update with the Board Council, and that's scheduled for November 3rd, and Ms. Moye has sent out the information.
Excellent, thank you. Now our liaison report, Capital Region Education Council, Jackie?
Nothing to report, the meeting is tomorrow.
All right, thank you. Next is the chair report. I just want to reiterate how proud I am of our students and the accomplishments that they've been able to pull off with all of the stress that's been going on. It's really quite impressive that we had so many natural merit scholars, so incredibly proud of that, incredibly proud of our staff for wanting to be in our district as long as they have, and we are grateful to have them, and it is a legacy that I know our students remember them well. I saw Mr. Strick come over and say hi to Lillian before the meeting, so they remember our students just as much as our students remember them. So, we really appreciate that they took the time to join us tonight, so we could appreciate them. And I will now present Dr. Cartemola for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Medick, very brief hiring report tonight.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. A very brief hiring report. As you can see, we had no certified hires, and that continues that we did have all of our certified positions filled prior to the start of the school year. We had two non-certified new hires, an interventionist at Pine Grove and a teaching assistant at Pine Grove, and we did have one resignation for a para educator at Avon Middle School. We do have several non-certified positions still posted, that we are looking to interview candidates for various positions, both para educators and some other non-certified staff, so. And we've had no retirements this month.
Thank you. On the enrollment report, to say very similar last month, this is page 13 in the packet. Two additional students have registered since September. That gives us an overall difference, same time last year, about 19 students. However, we've also still have 22 outplayed students that are not included in those enrollment reports. Should mention that on the enrollment report, the 190, 109 choice students that we mentioned are included in those enrollment reports. We just break it out so that the board has an idea of the total number right now, because as you know, we've had several conversations about that and the target numbers for open choice. So we're still a bit below where we'd like to be, but still working with the crack office on that. On the strategic plan update, we have continued our meetings as an administrative team, as a whole leadership team from central office and out in the buildings also, our principals and assistant principals. We have been engaged in our goal planning as administrators together. Our administrators are engaging in the goal planning with our teaching staff. So this is an exciting time of year, looking at our data and looking toward the future and what we will be able to do moving forward with our students. I think we'll be speaking a little bit more about some of these things at our upcoming Curriculum and Professional Practices Committee meeting, including in talking about reading, and looking forward to having some more conversations with the board about the strategic plan moving forward. We saw the update at our last meeting for where we were as we came to in September. Just by way of general updates, we, you heard about Halloween, we're excited that we're able to bring back the kindergarten classes coming to the high school for Halloween. We started that, I think it was my first year and Mr. Rankowitz's first year here, and at the time, we piloted it with Pine Grove to see how it would work out. Obviously, it worked out very well. So this year, we're really excited. A little hiatus, obviously, in pandemic years, but we are bringing both Roaring Brook and Pine Grove kindergarteners to the high school this year. So, that's a really great time for our seniors and our kindergarteners to meet and celebrate Halloween together. So, it's always a nice time. Wish more of you could see it, but there's a, there's a lot of folk here as it is. So, thank you for mentioning that. Graduation, I just wanted to update the board, as this time, we had talked about whether or not, Mr. Rankowitz and I had had a conversation numerous times regarding the venue for graduation. As you know, we had to switch over to the Farmington Polo Grounds. I believe that was actually the, correct me if I'm wrong, because that was the first year I was here, and we were having, looking forward to the turf being done. So we knew we might not be able to have graduation here at the high school out there while that was happening. So we moved forward, we went to the Polo Grounds, and again, fast forward, and we were trying to make graduations work amidst a lot of COVID regulations that worked with us to do that. However, we had always thought about what it might look like to have graduation in another venue, and there were conversations that happened here at the high school, there have been conversations with previous senior classes that were looking to go other places and so on. But we kept it steady for the time being because we didn't need any more changes than what we already had in the last few years. That said, committee met again and asked to look into a few venues. I worked with Mrs. Russo from the business office, and she worked with, who they refer to as the elder Bridget in our office, who Bridget says, to call out to some other places where other school districts go. The Warner, for example, is one. The Bushnell is another. And here, the committee of the leadership team and the counseling department and the teacher leaders liked the idea of the Bushnell best. However, we wanted to also have the input of the students, the current seniors, and the families. Dr. Lockhart sent out a survey to those, to all of the seniors and all the families, and above 70% of the respondents there also selected the Bushnell. So, I guess we are going to try something different this year, and what we will, what we do know about that is the differences between some of the venues, and I believe this is the reason why it was chosen, and I obviously agree with the decision, I support them, I'm part of the reason we even began to have the conversation. One of the worries we always have at the Farmington Polo Grounds is if it does rain, that's still an issue for us there, particularly if it's raining anything other than a drizzle, we're not able to have graduation. So, this is the, was the impetus that I asked again that we look for an inside venue. And as you know, here, inside of the high school is not large enough for our students to be able to bring any more, and maybe two guests, depending on the size of the class. And this is a large class, this is 233 seniors right now. So, the good news about the Bushnell is, obviously, there is a tremendous amount of seating, and there aren't really any bad seats there from the vantage point of being able to see the stage. There's obviously air conditioning. The parking lot across the street, they have enough parking for everyone in. They make sure that it's only the people renting the venue that are able to park there that night, so it's not as difficult as it maybe has been sometimes if you've gone in for a show. We have made sure of that, and they help us with the staffing, too. So, we're going to move forward with that. The date, we are still looking at, and I will bring the proposed date of graduation to the board at the November meeting. And that's, oh, excuse me, our CPDC meeting, that's right. I wanted to just, and maybe just if you want to chime in also, I wanted to just talk a little bit about our Curriculum and Professional Development Council meeting that we had two weeks now, it was in fact of time. As I mentioned at a previous board meeting and when we did our strategic plan update, we revised what CPDC looked like a bit this year, and we have new membership. We went through a process for members to apply and to be selected, and we really had a fantastic first meeting, and I'll throw that to you, Mr. G.
Yeah, we, in the past, had kind of separated out the curriculum piece from the professional development piece, so we wanted to bring those back together because they're closely connected. And we set out an invitation to apply to our staff, and we had quite a bit of interest. We got a great group of members together who are very excited about the work and looking forward to making an impact. So, it's been a good relaunch.
We had a lot of positive feedback after that first meeting. So, thank you to Mr. Genie, Mr. Medick, and Ms. Krasinski who's out there in the audience, I think, with us tonight for helping to redesign that. That had been something we had talked about for the last few years, but again, incremental steps in some ways because of what else we have managed. So, thank you. Also, I want to ask, I'll ask ahead of time, the donations that are on the consent calendar tonight, those are items A through D, so only the donations, not the field trips. I want to ask the board if you would please table those items. Ms. Russo's been out of the office, as you know, that's why she's on the screen with us tonight. And there was a step missed in the processing of them, and I want to make sure, and Ms. Russo wants to make sure, that they have all been gone through to ensure the compliance with the board policy and also our financial obligations. So, this doesn't mean, to be clear, that we're not accepting the PTO donations or any of the others that are on here, those are already in process, but there's related steps and paperwork on our end that has to be done before I put the board in the position of approving them and being responsible if something were not correct.
All right, excellent, thank you. So we will be seeing those at a future consent calendar.
November.
Yep, perfect. So we still have on the consent calendar two items for field trips. If a board member is comfortable making the motion to approve the consent calendar, unless someone wants to pull one of the items.
I'm happy to make the motion to approve.
All right, thank you, Jackie.
But I did want to make a comment about them, should I wait until after?
I, I think I might know what it is, because, because I think there was a question from a couple of board members about funding with it. So, I can speak to it just quickly, if you don't mind, and we can have more of a conversation later on. I think other board members might have the same question, especially with some newer board members here. There's a question related to students and/or families that may not be able to afford trips like these, for example, that are going out of state. We put on all of our information that goes out about field trips, one of the things that we have made prominent is that if you are in need of assistance, to speak to one of your counselor or to, or to the person that is running the trip, and students and families do do that. Automatically, as we've talked about, I think in the past, if you are a student that qualifies for free or reduced lunch, then the assistance for these field trips and other fees at school is something that we work with as a district, in part through grant funding, like the title funds that we've spoken about before. If you don't meet those guidelines, there still are times that, we have families that may have never applied for free or reduced lunch, for example, but they're facing a hardship at the time. Medical issues and things like that, we've managed over at least the last few years that I've been here. So, the way we put it out is not, if you qualify for free or reduced lunch, ask us for help, that's, that's automatic. We say if you need assistance, please speak to someone. And then what we do is go into action of student activities funding, that might, that might be able to cover additional money on the trip. Some of the companies that we work with, for example, when we do the trip to Europe, there are a certain number of scholarships that are giving out for students that have need base, so sometimes by via working with the company, we're able to do that and bring X amount of students at little or no cost to the student's family. And very often, I'll think our PTOs, again, I've seen this happen a number of times, PTOs have donated fundraising funds for students to go, and obviously, when that does happen, it's done in a way that we keep the confidentiality of the student and the family that needs it, so it's not direct from PTO to, say, Mrs. Cartemola for the payment of the plane ticket or the like. It's, we have a process that we've developed, and we, they're really handled on a case-by-case basis, though. And I can say, I've seen a number of times that we have done this in all of the schools over the past few years, both for club trips, for field trips, proms, prom gallons, tuxedos. There's very few things that I can think of that we have not assisted families with when the need is there for funding.
I think that's great, and I think it's really important that you're communicating it clearly, right off, right off the bat. I think that's excellent.
I'm wondering, I don't know if this happens anymore, but back in the day, I think I recall groups doing, doing their own fundraising to help. Is that also?
That's, thank you for bringing that up. That is another, just general fundraising, as you know, maybe, you know, they're selling magazines, or they're selling Yankee Candle or the like for offsetting the cost of the trip. So there's, yes, we still do that.
Are there any other questions? Can I have Jackie's motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Hi, and Laura as well, and that's unanimous, Shirley. Thank you, everybody. Now, moving on to old business, we have a policy that we discussed at our October, no, it's September meeting, my goodness. And so we're bringing it back as a second read. Dr. Cartemola, would you mind just summarizing quickly, and then if there's questions, we can certainly answer those.
Yes, so the student privacy policy, which begins on page 33, is a, is a new policy for us, but it's a new policy in that all of this information is in the same policy now, which is the way that Board Council recommends it. This is the model policy, it is, this is one of the policies that attorneys would recommend you do not make changes to because it's in line with federal and state statute and regulations, which are, federal and state regulations, especially federal regulations, carry the same weight as law, basically. So, these are definitions of personally identifiable information and kinds of examinations that get done at school that we don't typically do, and that would be, quote, invasive under most circumstances, but it is the law, the way that this is written. And student surveys is a piece of this student privacy policy, which is actually how this, this policy originated as a conversation at our policy meeting because I revisited the student survey policy that we had on file before we were doing the school climate and connectedness surveys last year as an entire district. I wanted to make sure that we were in compliance with board policy and however we facilitated it. And when I looked at that survey, I knew that there were pieces that were missing from it, from, by seeing the date that it was last adopted. So, I worked with the attorney, sent that student survey, our student survey policy to the attorney, and asked for advice on redoing it, and the advice was, adopt the entire privacy policy, which covers the student surveys, but also other facets related to student privacy, and that's what this is.
Are there any questions from board members? All right, hearing none. Fage, would you like to make a motion?
Yep, so I'm going to make a motion to adopt policy 5125.1, student privacy, second read as presented.
And do I have a second? Okay, we have Lynn, thank you, all in favor? Hi. That goes unanimously. I saw Laura as well, yeah. And next, as Dr. Cartemola explained, the survey of students, we are requesting to delete because it's already included in the policy we just approved. So, do I have a motion to approve deletion of policy 6162.51, survey of students? Go ahead, Fage. And do I have a second? All right, thank you, Lisa. All in favor? Hi. We've got Laura, unanimous for that as well. Thank you very much. Now we move on to new business. We have our 2022, 2023 teacher and administrator evaluation models, and I'll ask Mr. Medick if he can summarize that for us.
Certainly. In your packet, you'll notice a very brief presentation about three slides. Following the return to school in the 2020-21 school year, the Connecticut State Department of Education created a series of flexibilities for educator evaluation within the state of Connecticut. They made some changes to the 2017 framework that allowed for districts to reintroduce formal and informal evaluations for staff after being home for a period of time to close out the previous school year. The State Department of Education has continued to extend those flexibilities through the 2020-21 school year, the 2122 school year, and they have extended them for the 2223 school year. Both our teacher and administrator evaluation plans were updated to include all of those flexibilities in previous years, and we have continued to keep those flexibilities in place with our current plans as presented. So our teacher and administrator evaluation plans were revised this summer. Very minor changes were made to them because the State Department of Ed released those flexibilities in the spring for our preparation over the summer. The only real changes were to the roster for our education members and also members of our Curriculum and Professional Development Council. All of the key points of the plans remain the same. This was presented at our recent CPDC meeting and was voted on by the CPDC Committee for full approval to be moved to the Board of Education for your review and approval, which is part of our policy and also required by statute.
Thank you. Do any board members have questions?
I kind of have a question. I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, but these, this, the rubrics, everything about this evaluation, it's very rigorous. I can't imagine what it was like before the flexibility. How does the flexibility, where do I, I don't see the.
So there isn't really.
There isn't, okay. The standards are super high.
The rubrics, the rubrics remain the same. The flexibilities lie within the number of observations or reviews of professional practice that were required. They reduced the.
Reduced it?
Minimum number, and we have adjusted ours in the previous school years to keep that. So, we still have multiple opportunities to evaluate our staff through formal observations and informal observations, but it's a reduced number from previous years.
And to be clear, that happened because of schools being closed with pandemic. So, when people were, as Mr. Medick mentioned, home and teaching online, it was not really possible to evaluate people in the model that we had, as inflexible as it is. So evaluations were still done, but they could not be done in the same way that they were done when we were in school. So at the end of that first year, you know, when we closed down in 2020.
I just wouldn't, I don't want the public thinking that this is any less rigorous than it ever was.
The standards remain the same.
Right. And we didn't make any changes to go backward from when, from the time that the state introduced those flexibilities, because the state and various committees are also working on a new version of teacher evaluation at present, and so we know that we'll be getting a new model and guidelines, so we left our plan the same, which most districts in the state did.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none. They do need board approval, do I have a motion to approve the teacher and administrator evaluation models for 2022 to 2023? I've got Sarah. And do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lynn, all in favor? Hi, and Laura as well, unanimous, thank you very much. All right, thank you, Mr. Medick. All right, next is fiscal year 2023-2024 budget timeline. We have a list of dates, some of them can shift, and last year, we had spoken about not necessarily taking action on them because they can shift, and it's just more cumbersome to have to constantly vote, but. But I would advise everyone to look over them and try to attend the ones where we are required to be there. Does anybody have any glaring contradictory schedules that conflict with this?
These are, these are all the ones that we're supposed to be attending?
No, so Tuesday, December twentieth, Jackie, and everyone would be the first budget workshop for us as a board. Wednesday, the eleventh, we would have a follow-up to that, special meeting, continuation of that workshop as we've done in previous years. And then the following Tuesday, we would discuss the final version of the budget as it exists that time for possible approval by the board. And it has to go to the town very quickly thereafter. Susan, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's the next week, maybe the next Friday after that. Yes.
All right, and then other dates are still to be determined. So I would just advise add those dates to your calendar.
Thursday, I was wrong. Thursday, Thursday.
Okay. So that you're prepared for those extra dates that we may have.
I think we'll also, because Mr. Fleishman couldn't be with us tonight, we can check in. So since you're not voting on them, if you know of any glaring right now issues that there might be, you know, you might be out of town or what have you, and you could let us know, then we could try to rework these, and we'll ask Jeff the same.
Okay. All right. So any questions? All right, so the next is the capital improvement budget fiscal year two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four. We invite forward Mr. Altimus, our Director of Operations.
Good evening. I'm Altimus, Director of Operations. Slide please. First, a quick history. This is what was approved last year. Of those, the notification alarm system was not completed because of funding shortfall. We'll discuss that later. The emergency generator is on order. It will be installed next summer. High school locks were done. Security upgrades are, we did some of those projects, and we still have to do some outside speakers and strobes, and architect is designing, I mean, move for this. Side please. We also received some ARPA projects from the town. We finished the air handling system in the auditorium and in the ban room, and we still have some things to do in the locker room. Those are on order, and will be done next summer, as well as the variable air valve replacements in the academic wing of the high school, part of the ventilation system. Carpet replacement, we did the elementary schools, and then the, next summer, we'll be doing the high school and the middle school. And in technology, they've ordered it on hand, about twenty-six bed cues, five cameras, server, camera servers, and a number of access points to replace the old and outdated ones throughout the buildings. Next slide, please. Okay, this is the summary, and I've got a little bit of detail, not much, but you've seen it already, but this is what we're recommending requests from the town for this year, for next summer. One thing on it, we have had, based on, everybody knows how the economy's going and parts and everything like that, we have added a little bit to all the quotes. Town has allowed that. Town will also allow us to modify the numbers with some updated quotes in January, and if those are modified, you'll, you'll see those at the, your budget meeting at the end of January. Okay. Next slide, please. That's just an overview, you just have in your packets that shows us where all the, where we are in H-pack. Pretty good on it. Thompson Book looks like it's old, but it actually, we're not having any issues with it, so we probably won't be doing anything with that for a couple of years. Everybody else, everyone else, every other building's been done over the past eight years. Next slide, please. Five-year outlook, just to give you an idea, the projects that we're looking at, and it's probably easier to read in your packets than it is on the slide there. It gives you an idea that as of today, this is what we're looking at for the future. Next slide, please. First one I want to talk about is the pine grove, the notification alarm system. This is supplemental. We ran into a budget shortfall, mostly due to, like, cost of copper and labor costs, and so we have to go back in for a supplemental to bring that up so we can bring pine grove up to the same standard as all the other buildings, with their notification systems and the alarm systems.
Well, so just, if you don't mind, I want to make sure that we're clear again, though, that there was a shortfall in the funding, as you just said, but also, even with the, if we moved the funding for this, we could not get it done in the timeframe by the contractors. Like, even with the hundred and fifty, if someone came and dropped a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the, on the lawn for the project right now, this project cannot get done this year.
Correct. So this, this is a summer project, because they have to take down the alarm system, the entire building during the process, so we had to close the building. There's nothing wrong with the alarm system as it is now. This is just to prove it and bring it up to the same standard we have in the other four buildings.
And we did the others in the summer.
Correct. Okay, next slide, please. We have a couple, there's some floors here in the built, classrooms here, we have to bring out, when they tile it, they tile it over the old tile that's fallen up now. The old tile is asbestos, so we have to remove the asbestos and replace it in about six classrooms. And along went down, we're going to redo the community room. That's not asbestos, but it's just still a part of the reforming project.
When would this work be done?
This is summer. All of these are summer. There's a few things on the security side of somebody, the strobes, we can do it during the school year, but most of these are summer projects. Next slide, please. Again, emergency generator, every school has one except Roanbrook, which I already talked about, and then middle school's the next on line. Tell you what, the, this will be summer of twenty-four because one of the major components has a sixty-three week lead time right now. So this will be done probably in the summer of twenty-four, if not summer of twenty-five. Next slide, please. We're going to continue the interior lock replacements. It was successful here in the high school, very few glitches, minor things, but this was the most complex school. One thing that's changed for those of you who are in finance committee, we did get some quotes in, still trying to work out the quote, and middle school quote seems to be a bit off, but if it doesn't come down significantly, we'll probably jump to phase three, do Thompson Book next year, and then go back to the middle school the year after that, just because of what it's coming in as with some, we're writing, not writing, some things unique to the middle school as far as the locks, the door locks are concerned. Next slide, please. Security upgrades. Bottom line, we're pretty good on security. There's a few other things as we tweak it and improve it, and we also want to have some money there based on the police department's security assessment. We don't expect a lock to come out of that, but we want to be prepared in case they do take some more recommendations. By the way, this is the type of things that we're going to be looking at spending the money on. Next slide, high school partial roof replacement. Just the history of it's on here. If I have a diagram, it shows a little bit better, but we're basically breaking down into two phases. If you go to the next slide, please. That's how we break down the cost, and these are based on architectural estimates right now. His best guess is the way it will cost us to do. Go to the next slide. Those, the gray areas are the areas that we're looking at doing, and the first year will be number one, two, and five, and that's based on cost. If it comes in over, and they just end up doing one and two, we'll mix and match as we go based on how much, what it costs to do next summer. So our plan is hopefully we'll do one, two, and five, which is the west wing, the connectors, and the loading dock. And then the following year, we'll do three, which is the gallery, and four, which is the old gym. And that is a summary of what our request will be for this coming year, pending your approval.
Thank you, Miles. You gave an even more in-depth presentation to the finance committee, so we appreciate you coming back for the full board in order to present this information. Do we have any questions about any of the requests? This, go ahead, Lisa.
I do. On page fifty-one, you talk about the Thompson Brook roof design. There's a twenty-five thousand dollar fee for that, and then also the roof design and replacement with a one point two. Why are we paying twice for roof design?
Uh, it's probably, I got a front page now.
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one. We had a different order. The one fifty-one, the fifth one. It's probably a typo. One's the design, one's the actual construction of the roof.
Okay, so we're not, it's not like we're getting, or I, I just didn't know if we were getting more than one quote?
No.
Was that the idea?
The idea is we get an architect to design the roof for us, make sure it's done right, and he also project manages it for us.
Right.
And then that's the twenty-five thousand, and then for the actual roof, it should be roof replacement. Roof design's the type, type of, my part, I apologize for that. So the roof replacement, we're estimating at this point to be about one point two million dollars.
Okay.
But we'll know more once we get this design in.
Okay. I had another question.
Go for it.
So the district-wide security upgrades, which is on page fifty-six, I just had a question with, about the speed bumps. Are you increasing the speed bumps in the parking lot or in the area, or are you just redoing?
We don't have any speed bumps in this parking lot at this moment. So we want to put speed bumps around the backside and the parent pickup, especially over here, and over by the gym where we exit crossover, and then a couple in the back, that's where our director of security has advised we would like to have them.
We work with the police department, the recommendations too, and the traffic division on those.
Correct, police, yeah, there's a.
As part of the threat assessment.
SRO and the security officer, and the director of security, we're out there with that.
I thought, I thought we had some.
I'm thinking about one. It could be the wrong school, but the, these are the version that the police just recommended that we put in. And now, now you've got me thinking, Lisa, because I'm not sure about that, Miles, but I have to think about it a second.
My snowplowers.
They, they, they know there's none here.
They know there's none here.
Okay.
And I haven't brought the news to them yet.
I'm not disagreeing with the idea. I just wanted to, for some reason, I thought we had, and I didn't know if we were adding. It sounds like we're adding.
Yeah, I'll just look back, I'll look back at the report and make sure too.
And then one last question, Miles, sorry. The roof replacement on page fifty-seven, it says that the roof was replaced in, in ninety-eight, and it was scheduled for two eighteen. It also says that it was replaced in two thousand eight, and it was scheduled for two twenty-eight.
If you go to the diagram of the replacement.
So I, I, my question.
There's two types, there's two groups on the corner. We're replacing the order of the two.
Right, but in the narrative on page fifty-seven, it says that, or the narrative that you, yeah.
Yeah.
So you replaced the roof in nineteen ninety-eight. It was scheduled to be replaced in two thousand eighteen. You replaced it in two thousand eight, and it was scheduled to be replaced in two thousand twenty-eight. Is it, is that, am I reading that right?
Uh, no, it's a little misleading. What we're talking about is two different sections of the roof. Part, it was partially replaced, if you go to the picture of the timeline, please. The one that was replaced in nineteen ninety-eight are the gray areas.
Okay.
The ones that were replaced as part of the remodeling in two thousand eight, or the white, it's partially roof. So was, the whole roof was not replaced at the same time back in two thousand eight.
Yeah, I understand. I'm, I'm saying, so is it two, so there was a replacement in nineteen ninety-eight?
Correct, just up to thirty thousand square feet.
Correct. But it was scheduled to be replaced in two thousand eighteen?
That's when the, that's when the warranty expired on the roof, so that's why we say it should have been replaced four years ago. We had, we did not replace it then.
I see.
We'll be able to replace it now, next year.
I see. And then the, there, the two thousand eight, so why are, are we not making, like, the two thousand eight is scheduled for replacement for two twenty-eight?
Correct.
So why, why is it not lasting?
No, it's a normal, they normally give a twenty-year warranty on that type of roof. It lasts, like, for instance, the roof at Thompson Book is twenty years old now, and it's not leaking that much. Neither is the, the new roof that we did nineteen ninety-eight. We just want to get it before it starts to be, twenty years is a standard warranty on recycled roofs. So not right now, but basically we have to pay for it. Does that answer?
I, I don't know if I'm, if I'm not understanding it.
Can I take a shot at your question?
Yeah, I, I don't know if I'm not understanding it correctly.
I was gonna read to it, but go ahead.
I think it's a little confusing. I think what Lisa is wondering is if that roof that was done in two thousand and eight doesn't need to be redone until two thousand and twenty-eight.
Correct.
Is that on the list to be done?
No.
Okay, that's what I was not understanding. So that's not, it's, that's not being done.
Oh, so those roofs that you're talking about right there.
Correct.
Have, have been done, and we're not doing those.
No, we are replacing the nineteen ninety-eight roof.
Okay.
We're not replacing the two thousand eight portions.
Okay.
Only the nineteen ninety-eight part.
Okay, thank you.
Those are tar paper and stuff.
So I thought that's what you were asking, but I just wanted.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
I, I, it was, it was a little, I, I was like, why are we paying for, yeah, but I got it now. Good. Thank you, thank you, Miles, so much.
Are there any other questions? So the town council does want it by tomorrow. That's their request, so that they can add it on it.
That's why we're here tonight, yeah.
So they're hoping that we can vote to move it forward, so do, I have.
Hang on one second, let me answer that question, if you don't mind.
Go for it.
We're not crazy, no, there, there aren't any out here right now. Speed bumps, there aren't none out here right now.
Oh.
I think of it, because Grace is learning right now, and she's, I don't remember there being any.
Make sure to.
That's true.
Yeah.
You, you, you got me thinking, and I thought, the wrong report? This, this is, this is not just part of the Capitol, but no, not here.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Okay, I've been looking for a motion to approve the project list to move it forward to the town council.
So moved.
All right, Jackie, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Fage. All in favor? Aye, including Laura. That's unanimous again. Thank you. Laura, have you wanted to speak at all, and I'm overlooking you? Okay, I'm sorry. I'm looking at your hand all the time, but I should ask if you have something to say. All right, next is revision to the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year calendar.
Thank you. Thank you, Miles.
Yes, thank you very much.
And I'll, just finishing that up, I will connect back with Susan, Miles, and I will tomorrow make a couple of adjustments that we saw tonight here. There was a typo on the one, on the one page before we send this over to the town. As you know, we spent a lot of time on this in the finance committee with the board and since, and updating it, so we just missed a couple of spots where we were working with the numbers, so thank you for all the time that you spent with us at the previous meeting also. On the school, on the calendar, we talked over the last two years about the NEAS process. The, when we adopted this current calendar earlier this spring, I mentioned to the board that I knew we were going to need at least one, most likely two, half-days in the twenty-two, twenty-three calendar for the high school only. And at that time, we were waiting to see where we were landing in the process with NEASC, and now we are into the year, and we've, as you saw, we've done our course with the graduate, we've received our correspondence from NEASC, Movement and Association of Schools and Colleges, and we have to complete some additional work for the self-study that the high school does. We are asking the board to approve a modification to the current calendar to allow for a half-day at the high school only on November thirtieth. Dr. Lockhart and I, the two NEASC chairs, will be talking about the possibility of a second one, but that would certainly not be before January, so I'm hoping at the next meeting, I, I may have the date for you by the next meeting. If not, it would be December that we could bring another date forward, but tonight is[1761.54]
not, it would be December, that we could bring another date forward. But tonight is simply November thirtieth that we are asking the board to approve a half-day for the high school only, our teacher, students only.
Any questions about that? All right, then I'll make a motion to amend the current calendar to add in a half-day for high school students only on November thirtieth in the two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three calendar. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes unanimously as well.
And we will obviously send out a notification immediately to high school families and students.
This is a second opportunity for communication from the public. Was there anyone who's with us that had wanted to speak? Seeing none, I will move on. Next is communication from Avon Board of Education members. Any other board members? Laura, you're all set? All right, seeing none. Then I will actually ask for us to move into executive session. I'm inviting in Dr. Carnemola, Mr. Jamini, and Mr. Medic to join us for the discussion concerning an attorney-client privileged communication regarding board member roles and responsibility in regards to strategic planning at eight-ten P.M. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, by Liz. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, so we will move ourselves into the community room in order to do that, so that Nutmeg can shut down and be all set. Thank you for joining us, everyone.